Hey everybody, I think we'll get this meeting started.
Recording in progress.
Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the city council meeting, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. With that, if we could have roll call, please.
Luther.
Here.
Burstad.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Yanko.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Schwabs.
Here.
Gents.
Here.
Solberg. Schlue.
Here.
Erdman.
Here.
Somerfeld.
Here.
Okay, great, thank you. We're moving on to special recognitions. We have a special recognition this evening and I think we'll play, pay tribute to the, the person receiving that, the special recognition and that being said, we're gonna call Greg Stye up here, but Dave Schofield's got a couple of things to say. Dave Schofield?
Yeah, I do. Greg will be retiring here on January fifth after thirty-six years with the city, plus two summers before that. At Lowell's retirement party, he, he made it a point, Greg did, to point out that he was here before Lowell and he'll, he'll be here after Lowell. So Greg's obviously been a fixture at the street department for many, many years and we're certainly gonna wish him well in his retirement. I share with his wife Beth, son Mitch, who I may or may not have enlisted to get Greg here today. And, and his daughter Michaela. So I wanted to just thank Greg for all of his time here with the city and, and thanks for coming tonight.
Well, this Greg Stye, finally, after how many, how many years? Nineteen eighty-seven or two thousand twenty-three? Over thirty-six years. All good years, right? You know, longevity is really important for the city of Menominee. Old Brandy was, was here for like thirty-five years. Heidi was here for like thirty-five years. And you're here for thirty-six years. I think you're holding the longevity award for the, you know, the go-to kinda guy. Something breaks down, Greg, he's the guy to call. Something's gotta happen this weekend, Greg's the kind of, kind of guy to call. There's, no matter what it is, if you gotta use an excavator, you gotta drive a truck, you gotta get the sander, you gotta get the plows on, you gotta get this stuff done. Who's our go-to guy? Greg. Now the go-to guy is gonna be. David, oh David, oh David, you're the new go-to guy. Well, but on behalf of the city of Menominee, I, as mayor, would like to present this to Greg Stye. Congratulations on your retirement in recognition of and appreciation for many years of dedicated service and support. Community Service Department nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand and twenty-three. That, with that, I'm supposed to ask you to make a speech.
Been good years and still like we said. Leaving on a good note.
Well, I, I so appreciate being with Greg, so. I wanna have Eric Adkins come up too and, and David, and I wanted to present this to Greg Stye. That being said, we want all of our other place, the city has been for at least thirty-five years.
Okay, moving on. A quick reminder, if you're going to speak tonight, please speak into your microphone because sometimes our audio doesn't always pick it up otherwise, so please speak clearly and speak into your microphone. We need to move on to the approval of minutes. If somebody'd like to make a motion, Ryland, go ahead, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion, Laura?
I will second Ryland's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. No public hearings this evening. Under public comments, public comments is a portion of our meeting where anybody can speak for three minutes or less. Please come up to the podium, give us your name and your address. And speak on agenda items for the evening. So, good evening. Oh, is your microphone on? Now it is.
Okay, I am so pleased to be a part of Menominee and I've been here since nineteen ninety-three. I appreciate all the services that are provided here, including the wonderful water that we drink from our deep wells. And I'm here because I'm concerned about the potential of pollution affecting that deep well water with the sewage fields that are in our surrounding groups of houses, you know, around our community, but not actually, you know, receiving sewage systems from the city. So I would, you know, it's our most precious resource that we have is our water that we can drink and that we can bathe with and that we can use. So I would hope that the city would very seriously consider helping us with pollution prevention. Thank you. And I think Steve Ogseth wants to speak also.
Lorraine.
Yeah.
Before you leave, we're gonna, you're gonna give us your name, your address.
My name is, my name is Lorraine Better. I'm from five-one-five Twenty-first Street here in Menominee. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine.
Good evening. I will sign in. My name is Steve Ogseth, H-O-G-S-E-T-H. Six-fourteen Woodridge Court. In Menominee. Mayor Knack, city counselors. All staff who are present here tonight. All citizens who have shown up. I just wanna take a minute to address the same topic Lorraine is addressing. I am very pleased that Menominee and Dunn County, that we have in pretty much, pretty good drinking water. And I am here to support sustainability of this water. Not only in Menominee and Dunn County, but I'd say Wisconsin, the USA globally, water is very critical. I think we all know that. But we have to really pay keen attention. Now, we have a man in our midst that I've come to know in the last five and a half years. Will be making a presentation tonight. That man is Neil Cook. And I have come to respect Neil's expertise as a hydrologist. I am so thankful that this man has really, in his retirement years, has made a passion out of looking, looking out for our groundwater in Dunn County. And I would say not only in Dunn County, but within the region, within this portion of Wisconsin, he really pays attention. So I am here to ask the leaders of Menominee to pay close attention to what Neil has to say tonight. And to give a, a real strong reflection, because I think he's gonna be delivering a powerful message and it's not a simple issue that he's talking about. And now I know there's quite a few people there tonight, I'd like to just ask, is there anybody else who is here in support of this same message? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that very much.
My name is Toby Ellison. I live at fourteen-ten Seventeenth Avenue East in Menominee. I too would like to speak about the possibility of contamination of private wells around Menominee and in Dunn County. We moved to Birch Creek, south of town, in nineteen seventy-seven. We had our own well, we had our own septic system. In fact, we had a lift pump that would pump our sewage out into the, our liquid sewage out into the drain field. I also had friends in Woodland Terrace. And some of those friends were expressing a deep concern about the failure of some of the wells in Woodland Terrace. It wasn't long after we moved there, I think maybe three years or so. And Homer's Trailer Court became an issue for water safety in our area. There was a swale of land west, south and west, or excuse me, north and west of Homer's Trailer Cart. And one time, or several times, there was raw sewage right on top of the land. And so that, that warned us all that something needed to be done. Eventually, the city connected that court with the city sewage system. I know they were looking at the possibility of their own system or connecting with the city. We moved into town in two thousand and ten. And we did that because we're getting older. We needed to live on one level, so when we get decrepit, we could have the nurses come to us. But also, we were concerned about maintaining our system, our, both our water and our sewage system. I know for a fact that if the city would decide to connect outlying areas with the system, or if the outlying areas were asked to develop their own sanitary district. I know that that would be very expensive for the homeowners and I can appreciate that deeply. However, perhaps in considering one's personal investment in a home and in their property. I think it's only a matter of time before some of these wells and systems are gonna have problems. What is the home worth then? So I think it's very important that we look at the, this whole issue in a kind of a comprehensive way. And address the issue that we are really being confronted with a dangerous situation. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Toby. Appreciate you being here and speaking. Anybody else like to speak? The microphone is open. Last call for public comments. Okay, we'll close public comment portion and move on with the rest of our meeting. That brings us down to the unfinished portion and there is no unfinished business tonight, so we have new business. Under six A, School District of the Menominee Area Referendum Presentation by Dr. Joseph Zdowski. I've known Joe a long time. He's done amazing things for Menominee in the school district. And I, I, I wanna say a lot of good things about Joe. I, Eric, I turned the microphone over to you.
Everybody, please welcome Dr. Joe Zdowski here from the School District, Menominee Area. I've had the pleasure of working with him for a number of years in a variety of capacities. And he had requested to come before the council today to speak for a few minutes to talk about the school district's upcoming referendum. And in order for us to move forward with that, we would need a motion to suspend the rules to be able to hear Dr. Zdowski speak about that referendum. We can just do it?
Well, we got you on the agenda tonight, Doc Joe. So, you know, thank you for being here and we're gonna listen to what you have to say, cuz I know that you are incredible.
That's really nice and I appreciate all the nice words. I, I am Joe Zdowski. This is my tenth year as superintendent in the school district. My wife and I live up in Wakanda Shores. Very interesting about the water and I know when we moved here, that was one item that I was considering is whether or not we wanted our own private well and we're very happy with our city system that we have over in Wakanda Shores. But I'm here tonight to talk about the school district and the referendum that is gonna be on the ballot on February twentieth. I appreciate you taking the time. I see Dave has my presentation. I'm gonna really abbreviate this because I know you have a lot of important business. So I'm gonna go quickly, but I wanna make sure all of you know that I am more than willing to have additional conversation. All this information is right on the front page of the school district website. We have a whole portion of our website dedicated to the referendum. We just wanna make sure that the community is well informed before the vote on February twentieth. Also with me is Abe Smith. Abe is a member of our school board. He's also able to answer questions, so please feel free to reach out to Abe or any school board member. On the screen is the question that'll be on the ballot and what the school district is asking is for voters to consider a four-point-two million dollar referendum that will begin in the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year and carry on into the future in a recurring way. You can keep going, Dave. I'm gonna move fast. So just a little bit about the school district and I'm not gonna spend much time, but I don't know that people recognize that we educate about thirty-three hundred students per year. Anywhere from four-year-old kindergarten all the way up to seniors in high school. Forty-three percent of our student population is considered economically disadvantaged by the state. Students qualifying for free and reduced lunch. Seventeen-point-three percent of our students receive special education services. And four-and-a-half percent of our students are English language learners. You can see the other information. I think most of you are pretty familiar with what we're doing. But things are going well. All of our schools, you know, when we add all the scores up and we get a district report card from the state, we are meeting the expectations and we're very proud of that. So recurring referendum, you know, it, it's pretty rare. Menominee has not had a recurring referendum that's been passed in our school district. But what it is, is a recurring operational referendum allows us to continue our operations. Most of our operations have to do with classrooms and our teachers and our support staff. But all of the busing, all of the curriculum, all the materials, all of our buildings, everything is building operations. So why is a referendum needed? I wanna make it very clear, this is not about mismanagement. Our school board has done a terrific job over the years positioning our school district so not only to provide a great education, but also to be very, very frugal with the community's resources. But as you can see from the map on the screen, the way that public schools have been funded in Wisconsin, eighty-two percent of school districts have now needed to go to referendum. You can see Menominee's school district circled in the red. We are one of the few, few school districts who have not. Because of how we've managed our finances, because of the great decisions school boards have made in the past, we've been able to make it to, what is it, eighteen percent left of the schools that have not gone to referendum. But we think now is the time. This graph here, it's on the website. You might wanna look at it in more detail, but what it shows is it shows how per pupil revenue has tracked with inflation. The black line is what per pupil revenue would be in the state if the state's average revenue limit had kept up with inflation. However, you can see Menominee's revenue limit per student is the bottom line, the maroon line. And you can see that Menominee for many years has operated below the state average. And you can see the gap between the state average and what Menominee is operating at continues to get bigger. That is where the problem lies. The green line, which is right under the black line, that shows what our revenue per student would be if the revenue limits that came in in nineteen ninety-three were indexed with inflation, but unfortunately, they have not. This graph here shows how Menominee stacks up with other area schools. We're in the Big Rivers Conference with Hudson, Chippewa Falls, Eau Claire, Rice Lake. I don't need to list all of them. But this graph here shows the average state revenue per student, that's in the black, that has the numbers listed by it. And up above that line is Hudson and Rice Lake. They're receiving well more revenue per student than the state average. Below the line is Eau Claire and Chippewa Falls. They're receiving per pupil revenue that is similar to the state average, but not quite as high. And you'll notice that Eau Claire has gone to referendum a number of times and they're probably going to referendum again. Menominee is below that in the red line with the dots. And you can see that we are one of the lower schools in our conference and we're well below the state average. Now, if we were to take this graph back to nineteen ninety-three when the revenue limit started, it wasn't that big of a problem, even though these revenue limits were set in a very inequitable way. And Menominee has always operated below the state average. The band you can see was pretty tight. But in two thousand and eleven, revenue limits stopped being indexed with inflation. And you can see that that gap from two thousand and eleven until now has gotten wider and wider, leaving students in our schools behind. What's made this problem, really a problem, made it worse in the last couple of years has been the pandemic, how our state has handled pandemic funding and high inflation. Schools across Wisconsin did receive many funds, millions of dollars to help deal with the pandemic and we were very appreciative of that. But I had a, a sneaking suspicion, after being a district administrator for over seventeen years, I had a feeling that we should be very careful with those funds and we were. The problem though is that the state of Wisconsin did not give us any new revenue. They froze revenue limits because of the federal money that we received. But because we were careful, we were able to apply two-point-eight million dollars of federal pandemic funding to this year's current budget. But next year, when that money is gone, and it's either gone or expired, we're gonna use every cent of it. But after that money is gone, that leaves a two-point-eight million dollar hole. And you all know from the city what inflation has done. It was eight percent last year, it's tracking at over four percent this year. So when you talk about a fiscal cliff of expiring pandemic money and high inflation, we're at a crossroads where either we're gonna have to make drastic cuts or we need more revenue. I can tell you that our school district does not operate like some other schools. We don't have all the bells and whistles and frills and, and things that you can see in some other school districts. We are not asking for more. We're not asking to add staff. We're not asking to add books. We're not asking to add more computers. What we're saying is that without more revenue, we are gonna have to make drastic cuts. And this stuff on the screen is just an example of, of what the type of decisions a school board would need to make. Higher class sizes, longer bus rides, less academic support. It's very concerning. And that's why our school board, we did a survey, we asked the community and the, the results from the survey were very favorable, that people wanted to see us continue our services that we currently have. So what's it gonna cost? The bottom line. This referendum is gonna cost projected to be eighty-two dollars per year or six dollars and eighty-three cents per month for every one hundred thousand dollar evaluation. With the average house in Menominee, a little over two-thousand, two-hundred thousand dollars, probably about a hundred and sixty-four dollars for most houses. Now, at seventeen dollars a month, we think that's fairly affordable. We know that, you know, there's a lot of people that have a difficult time making ends meet. But we also know that without good schools and without providing important services to our students, it's gonna be a vicious cycle of problems. So you can see it is a one-time increase to the revenue limit authority. It increases one time and then that increase continues into the future. That's why it's recurring. I think you all know information about voting, so I'm not gonna talk more about this. And then the last slide is my favorite slide. These are just some examples that came off of our school district's social media. We have so many wonderful things happening with our students. The bottom picture, we had hundreds of girls at our middle school attend Smart Girls Rock. Not only do our schools do a lot of amazing things in the classroom, but we provide students with so many other opportunities that help them grow as individuals and develop into productive citizens. And we're hoping that people will make an informed choice with the referendum on February twentieth. In front of you, in your background, I gave you all a pamphlet. This pamphlet was made by a student at Menominee Middle School. Kendra Schmidt, an eighth grade student, won the student contest for creating a pamphlet. We now have another student contest going on about creating a commercial. You know, this is a pamphlet that's informational. It's not advocating one way or another. That was another opportunity for our teachers to explain to our kids about the importance of being able to provide public information in a balanced way. But at this time, I'll entertain any questions that council members or anybody else might have.
Well, thank you, Joe. Good presentation, number one. Number two, I understand the needs and the services provided by the school board, school district and the teachers and staff. It's amazing. Reoccurring, it means once you establish the value or that number, that's the same number that reoccurs each year on the tax bill. Is that correct?
What the school board is asking voters to consider is allowing the school district to exceed the state revenue limit by four-point-two million dollars into the future. So it'd be a one-time increase of four-point-two million dollars and that same four-point-two million dollar authority would continue into the future. And I'm glad you asked the question, Mayor, because when this first came out, some people were very concerned that a recurring referendum would be a compounding referendum. Where it'd be four-point-two million the first year, eight-point-four the second, twelve-point-six. That's not what this means. This means it's one-time authority that continues. Schools are a people business. It would not make sense for us to, to do a referendum that would create another fiscal cliff in three years or five years or even seven years. That's not a good way to do business and that's why we're looking at a recurring referendum.
Okay, good. Good answer to a, can be a tough question sometimes. I would open up the floor for council. If the council has any questions for Dr. Joe Zdowski, I would entertain those questions at this time. First of all, I, I appreciate you being here tonight and I appreciate the, the what the school district does for our kids. Not only the sports programs, the academic programs, all the after-school events. School, our schools are number one as far as I'm concerned and so I guess I just appreciate you coming here and, and giving us the information piece on this. It's good information. I would open it up again one more last time for council and/or Laura, go ahead, please.
I was just wondering if the results of the survey were available anywhere?
Yes, they're on our public website, in our board doc software. But it was very favorable, I can tell you.
So, thank you, Dr. Zdowski, for coming out today. Can you give this to us in real terms? Like, give us some real-life examples of if the cuts were to happen. Obviously, you, you said transportation and some of the classes, because Menominee is very fortunate in the fact that they offer a lot of different opportunities for our students. What are some of the things that we could potentially see go away if this doesn't happen?
Well, Penny, I'm very hesitant to name particular things, but I know that's important. And, you know, I already talked about longer bus rides, fewer bus, bus stops. But one of the things I'm most proud of recently is how we offer dual credit opportunities for students. We have a number of students who are going to graduate from Menominee High School with not only their high school diploma, but also their two-year diploma from Chippewa Valley Technical College. You know, we have a business academy where students are gonna have their business degree. We have CNA classes. We have all sorts of classes like that that we're expanding. But again, this referendum isn't about asking for more, it's about asking us to continue the great programming. One of my biggest concerns is the academic support. Now, there are students with disabilities that have IEPs where additional support is required, it's mandated. And we actually have to supplement the funding that we receive for special services by millions of dollars each year. And, and those services are not going away. What's gonna go away is the academic support for students who might not have disabilities, but aren't at grade level. And that, that support is critical for helping people be productive citizens in our society, in our city, in our county, in our town. And, you know, things like that, you know, they're not mandated, but they're so critically important. And then you talk about activities. I mean, there's, there's so many different things that the school district offers. The school board would have to look at everything if we're talking about cutting four-point-two million dollars. Thanks for the question, Penny.
Ryland, go ahead, please.
I guess I have a few concerns.
Sure.
One of them is, as best as I can tell, like, your own pay is higher than our police chiefs, our fire chief, any city staff. And you're talking about cutting programs that you're responsible for, you know, overseeing the budget of. And you're not leading by example. Being probably the highest-paid person in this room. That just right there, you know, when I do my own budget at home, I'm like, okay, you know, we have bills to pay and if, you know, we can't pay them, well, I don't get a raise then. And it seems like that's sort of the opposite of, of what's happened with the school district of you going, well, we need to cut the programs that benefit people long-term. But we need to give the administrators of staff raises and build new stadiums. But we need to, uh, give the administrators of staff raises and build new stadiums and, you know, pet projects get funded, uh, people at the top get raises, and the students are the ones that are suffering.
Yeah, I, I think that's a pretty slanted view. Um, but I, I appreciate the question. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about that. One thing I didn't mention in my presentation is the staffing shortage. And I'm sure the city's dealing with staffing issues. I know the county is. I know everyone is. And, um,
But didn't you also?
There's, there's a teacher shortage happening across the state right now. And we're, we're doing okay in Menominee, but I'll tell you, I, I've been a superintendent for over seventeen years. I've never seen anything like this. And to be able to recruit and retain the best teachers that we can, we have to be competitive with our pay. Um, and you mentioned my salary, you mentioned superintendents. You know, the average life of a superintendent in a school district is about three and a half years. And do you think that's good for a school district? Do you think that's good for, uh, an, any organization to have leadership transfer in and out like that? Before I came to Menominee, there was a revolving door of superintendents, uh, for quite a while. And, um, you know, I, I certainly do appreciate the compensation I receive. Um, I know our teachers and other employees do as well. But, um, you know, there, there's a hundred, out of four hundred and something districts, there's about a hundred superintendent changes a year. Almost a quarter of the superintendents are, are changing over. So, you know, I guess it's a decision that, you know, school boards have to make, just like city councils have to make. You know, i- i- there is a market for all of our positions. And, um, I agree with what you're saying about, you know, leading by example. But I also think we lead by example by hiring the best people that we can.
Thank you. I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna bring it over here to Eric. Eric, go ahead, please.
I just, I just got a few statements, you know? I know Joe some, and we have, uh, children, like aid children, and, um, and, and they've been worked together, and, and me and Joe have worked together in some athletic endeavors, and, and our children play sports together and go to school together. And I must say that, um, you know, the way I see it, Menominee School District is an absolutely wonderful school district for my children and, and all the, the, the kids that I was around throughout athletic endeavor. So, Joel, you know, that's how I feel, and I just want that to be on record. And second thing I would like to say is, in my, um, in my profession, I help people get homes. And just recently, because you mentioned special needs in Menominee, this particular family moved to Menominee, and their number one reason, and they were, you know, not well-to-do, but we found a place for them. Their number one reason they came to Menominee because their child could not get good special needs in many different counties in western Wisconsin. But their son, I think he's in middle school, seventh or eighth grade, came to Menominee and just took off and has been doing very good. So I just want to make that point and let people know that, you know, the school district does many things, include helping special needs students. And it's recognized by people.
Eric, I really appreciate that. And, and our special needs program and all our special education teachers, uh, they're second to none. And that's one of the, one of the things I'm very proud of, of our school district. We serve all students, and that's one of the beauties of public education. We, we do our best with every single student we have. And there's many students that have a lot of challenges, uh, but I'll tell you, I, I really think they benefit from coming to our schools.
Um, well, I agree, and that was a great question. I, you know, it's kind of interesting to look around the room and to see how many people graduated or went to school, Menominee High School. Uh, I know I went to school there quite a extra-long time. Jeff, did you graduate? You went to Menominee High School. You did graduate? Okay, so I'm just, and Gretchen? And so there's a, and David Schofield? And so there's a number of people in this room that, that went to Menominee High School or Menominee Schools. And I think since I went to school, the education system really just even got better. The teachers got better, uh, you know, the kids learned better than we did or than I did. And, uh, I just hats off to you, Joe, and the school district. And, uh, I, I think Menominee School District is doing a phenomenal job. So thank you for being here this evening. And, uh, well, I guess one last go-around if anybody has any questions. Otherwise, we need to keep moving with our meeting.
And Randy, I know you need to keep moving, but since you opened the door on that, could I just make one more comment, please? So I graduated in nineteen ninety-five from high school and, you know, whatever, what, a little before, a little after that. But if you look at a graph of, or a chart of, of the school funding, the schools now are so different from when we were in school, and the school funding is so different. Back in nineteen ninety-five, what Menominee was funded at per student was very similar to the other schools on that chart. It is not that way anymore. So when you think about this referendum, when you think about how schools operate, please recognize that there is a huge gap. And, and a lot of people don't understand that. A lot of people think school is like it was when they graduated or when they went through it. It is not like that. There are haves and there are have-nots. And that is why we're coming to the community to find out, you know, what kind of school do we want to have in our, in our community?
Well, great. Well, Dr. Joe Zdowski, thank you so much for the information that you brought forward to this evening. And, uh, it was very educational, and, and I think we gathered some good information from that, and I appreciate you being here this evening.
Thanks for the time, everyone. I know you're busy.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the, um, next presentation by Neil Koch, uh, regarding private wells and septic systems. Um, this would be, uh, new business, six B. Neil? And maybe just to, to give us a little bit of your background too, because, uh, you know, you've been a hydrologist for many, many years and your past experience. And, uh, and then we'll move on from there. But I know you've got a short presentation, and, and, uh, we appreciate you being here. Neil?
I'm a retired hydrologist, uh, from the U.S. Geological Survey. I was a geologist and hydrologist and, uh, did work around the nation. And since moving to Menominee, I've been studying the geology and the groundwater for about twenty-five years. And, uh, some of the things that I've, I've learned about, I feel I need to come to the city council and tell you the situation because Menominee has excellent drinking water, and I hope that stays that way. I think to save the city water, we need to ban the septic systems in the housing developments surrounding the city. Now, the city has their water in sandstone. And, uh, the water move, moves through the soil from rain and snowmelt into the sandstone. And that groundwater then discharges to the nearby lakes and streams. And, uh, I have a soils map here in front of me, and it's multicolored. Uh, there was ninety-one soil types in Dunn County, and I took the ninety-one soil types and, and looked at their percolation rates and grouped them into, uh, rates of excellent, very good, good, fair, and poor. Uh, the excellent is from ten to twenty inches per hour percolation. Once it goes through the soil at that rate, it's in the sandstone groundwater. So the, the wells, uh, in housing developments are, uh, the, uh, a septic system is, uh, two concrete tanks that where the solids go. And as the solids break down, the liquids go to a drain field. And this drain field then, uh, percolates down through the soil into the sandstone aquifer. And, uh, there's been studies done in Chippewa Falls, a major study was done in the whole county. And, uh, they found, uh, septic waste in wells. And Wis- uh, Wisconsin has done a number of studies, studies done all over the United States. And they've found viruses, high nitrates, and, uh, so the danger is that we can have, uh, the waste eventually come into your city wells. Now, uh, the septic systems are probably one step away from the outhouse. Uh, they're, they pollute the groundwater, and they also contaminate the nearby wells. And people say, well, the septic systems are in poor shape. They're, they're needing to be fixed. A new septic system in about two years will start contaminating the groundwater. So i- it's not a case of old s- systems. Now, what's in the drain field is that, that water goes through the, the soil and gets into the groundwater. Viruses, nitrate, and maybe PFAS, uh, forever chemicals. And, uh, in this area of housing developments, we have the rain and snow recharging the groundwater. Sixty percent of that recharge comes from the drain field. Sixty percent. Now, the understanding was that there was two aquifers in Dunn County. So the city wells were in the deeper aquifer. And, uh, you can see the cross-section that I, they have here, uh, showing, I think the city well, uh, is, is shown there. Uh, there are lenticular layers of shale in the sandstone. And so the belief was that this, this, uh, shale layer separated two zones of groundwater, upper and lower, uh, aquifers in the sandstone. As I looked at drillers' logs all over the area and all over the state, these shale layers, the lenticular, and, and some wells that I've looked at, drillers' logs, they're not there. And when a irrigation well is put in, the irrigation well is an open hole from the sandstone all the way down. Uh, so you might have a four hundred feet of open hole sand. So the irrigation wells are really mixing the water, uh, the higher, the higher waters in the groundwater with the lower waters in the groundwater. But I still thought, well, Madison, I mean, you're, Menominee's safe because they got deep wells. Well, Madison recently wanted to look at their city wells. And Madison's wells are about seven hundred feet. And they're in the same sandstone that we are in. This sandstone is very extensive. And it goes from Milwaukee down below Madison all the way up to Menominee. And it's very old. It's five hundred million years old, and it was formed near the equator. So you can figure as it moved up here over five hundred million years, the chemical process is going through the sandstone and the fractures that took place. And since I've been here, I've looked at a number of basements when they were digging for new houses, and I found vertical fractures, sometimes two inches. And I don't know how far these vertical fractures go, but very possibly they're going through the shale deposits. So now we have a situation where we could have water easily moving down into the deeper part of the sandstone. Well, Madison, uh, a hydrologist wanted to do a study of the Madison wells. And, uh, most of the hydrologists said, you're, you're wasting your money, you're wasting your time. He found human virus in a seven-hundred-foot well in Madison. And they couldn't understand how that could travel down seven hundred feet, the time it took, and still be alive. So I thought, oh, my gosh, if that's happened in Madison, that can happen here in Menominee. And, uh, so that's why I've become quite concerned about the city wells here in Menominee. Now, uh, as you, as you look at, uh, PFAS, the forever chemical, uh, just recently, the state did a study of wells, and they found seventy-one percent of the wells in Wisconsin had PFAS in them. And quite a bit of these wells were in agriculture areas. And I, that's kind of surprised me. Why, why are the, why is the PFAS in agriculture areas? Well, in, in, uh, Wisconsin, they take the septic waste from the concrete tanks, and they spread it onto the agricultural lands. And in Dunn County, there's four hundred sites. Uh, so over the state, there could be twenty-eight thousand sites with PFAS contaminating shallow wells. So therefore, could the septic waste in the drain field around the city of Menominee have PFAS that could then go down into your city wells? So you have two major problems. You have nitrate, and you have PFAS, forever chemicals. And they, they stay in the groundwater for a long time, and they can move great distances. So, uh, what can be done? In Algoma Township, which is just, uh, west of Oshkosh, the township banned all septic systems in housing developments. And they tied in with the city of Oshkosh, uh, on the east side, and Honor, the city of Honor on the west side. And the sanitary sewer system came in from those two towns to take care of the abandonment of the, all of the septic systems in housing developments. So it can be done. And, uh, the Maryland governor in, uh, twenty-eleven said, we need to ban septic systems in housing developments statewide. I don't know how far that got. But, uh, in Chippewa Falls, they have spent millions of dollars treating nitrate. And Eau Claire is now looking at spending maybe twenty million dollars to handle the PFAS. Is this going to happen to the city of Menominee? And the solution is somehow the septic systems in housing developments around the city need to be abandoned, and we need to get sanitary sewer systems, uh, connected either through the city or some type of development in the townships. And I think the city is going to have to work with the townships and the county and possibly the people to have this happen. Because, uh, I'm sure some people living in housing developments say, well, I've just spent fifteen thousand on a septic system. I don't want to tie in. But it happened in Algoma Township, and they've got excellent water. Their aquifer is still staying good because they saved the aqua from getting rid of those septic systems. Thank you.
Um, well, Neil, thank you for being here, number one. I don't know if we have a lot of questions. How, what I really would like to do is when we have, um, another situation here at the city, uh, being, um, you know, if we're going to d- drill a new well or we're going to look at a housing development or something like that, uh, would really appreciate you being able to come back and speak to us again, uh, regarding, you know, the location or so forth and so on. But I would open up the floor for a, a question or two, Gretchen.
Geologically speaking, do you have a handle on which of the current developments are in most danger of, uh, creating a situation?
I've got hearing aids, so I'm having trouble.
I'll speak up. Oh, I'm, I'm, I'll repeat it for everyone else to hear as well, so I probably wasn't loud enough. Do you have a handle, geologically speaking, on which developments around the city are in the most danger of creating a, a situation for our groundwater? All of them. Are there any that are particularly egregious?
I'm gonna, hey, Neil, before you answer that question, I'm gonna have you go back to the microphone because we're recording this, and we can't get it on the recording unless you're speaking over the microphone. And, but that's just a reminder for all of us to speak into the microphone very loud.
So I've looked at the housing developments around the city, and, uh, a number of them have high nitrate. And that's from the, uh, drain, septic drain fields, uh, taking that water down into the, into the groundwater where the wells are, and the wells are in high nitrate. And that's, and there could be viruses, but, uh, in Eau Claire, uh, somebody came in and did a study of three housing developments and found viruses. I think down and across, they did a study of housing developments and found high nitrates.
I, I think there's no easy answer to this. This is an ongoing, long-term question because how do we afford, uh, hooking up, uh, you know, when a housing development's two, three miles out of town? How do we do that? How do we make that happen? Other housing developments that are locally localized in the city of Menominee, that's also a problem. It, but it is a, a problem that, um, probably needs to be looked at, uh, more intently. And with Neil's expertise and the knowledge that he has and bringing that information to us makes us more aware of some of the problems that do exist. Uh, so I really want to thank Neil for being here this evening. Uh, one last time, if, uh, anybody has a last question from council, otherwise I'm going to close this portion down and keep moving with the rest of our meeting. Neil, thank you so much for being here and, and your expertise. We will be calling on you in the near future again. So, uh, keep your ears on and, uh, appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Neil. Okay, that brings us down to, um, six C, the change order number seven for stepping stones. Um, Dave Schofield, please.
Yes, so a- as we've talked about on a number of occasions, the city is the actual, uh, grantor. Thank you. Uh, is the, is the actual, uh, grantee, I guess, is a better way to say it, for the grant. Um, we have done a change order number seven that we're asking for approval on tonight. Uh, it's actually a, a deduct, so a, a reduction in, in cost of, uh, five thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollars and fifty-six cents. And for the most part, it's, it's just the contractor cleaning up some things that ended up not being necessary, or they were replaced by other items that were covered under previous change orders. So what I would, uh, ask for tonight would be approval of change order number seven with with Cedar Falls Building Systems for Stepping Stones Home Shelter for a deduct of $5,983.56.
Okay, great. Is there a motion, Jeff?
I'll make a motion to approve the change order number seven with Cedar Falls Building Systems for the Stepping Stones Homeless Shelter Project for a deduct of $5,983.56.
Okay, thank you. Is that a, is there a second to that motion? Chad? Can you turn your microphone on?
I'd like to second Mr. Luther's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfield?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Under six D, consideration of liability insurance carrier. The liability insurance for the city of Menominee has been looked at quite heavily. Eric Atkinson, our administrator, will bring you up to speed on that. Mr. Atkinson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So o- over the course of the summer, we had found out that our current liability insurance carrier EMC was going to be going up in cost. And considering the increased costs, I reached out to a couple vendors to check and see what other kind of quotes would be available. They included the League of Wisconsin Municipalities as well as touching base with our current broker with Anse Insurance, former Indian Head Insurance, to see if they had other potential options. And League and League of Wisconsin Municipalities came in with a lower quote. But our broker, Bruce Freeland, came back with an even better option that was presented in front of us that provided the same liability insurance as well as increased in certain areas. And we do have Mr. Freeland here with us today to ask or answer any kind of questions that may be presented. Now, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna, you, you're doing a great job. I just was wondering, you, you said that there might be a cost savings and I think you're probably bringing that up on your next screen.
I was. So included in your packet, I did a side-by-side comparable with our current provider EMC versus the CIC insurance that was, that was presented to us. And so on that screen, you'll see that if we continue with our current provider EMC for liability, we're going to be looking at a, a net pre-dividend of about $589,000. Now, the net total after dividend, and this is dependent upon our 15% flat rate that we would receive for workers' compensation, that would bring our net total to $556,238 for 2024 services. CIC insurance that was presented came a total pre-dividend of $519,030, which was lower than our pre-dividend from EMC. And then we have a sliding dividend, which comes with a 10% flat slider. And then depending upon how many claims that we have, we could go down even further in savings. So essentially what we would be looking at is savings of roughly $60,000 to potentially $113,000 by going with CIC. And I didn't include the league municipality insurance in there. And then that would have been about approximately $514,000 with comparable costs. So I did not include them in there on the comparable, just because they came in above our CIC insurance. And so one of the benefits that I really liked about the CIC is it offered the sewer backup clause in there. For those of you who were on council, probably remember, some time ago, remember when there was a sewer backup in our neighborhood over by the industrial park that came to considerable expense. EMC did cooperate with us and help navigate it. And a lot of that is thanks to the man in the back of the room there, Bruce Freeland, who helped negotiate that with another person as well to, to advocate for us. Whereas this CIC insurance does have that covered. In addition to that, we also are going to be seeing no aggregate on our liability limits, which is also of great value to the city, given the potential liability is the kind of services that we have could present to the city. So if you have any questions, I'd certainly be happy to entertain them or if, and this time we would have to suspend the rules, I believe, to talk to Mr. Freeland. There we go. Okay, I'll get in the nod of approval from the attorney. And be able to answer some of those questions in more specifics. But we had a really good run with EMC insurance. One of the things that really came to, well, it came to the forefront as to why we saw an increase of costs is they do insure a lot of, a lot of entities beyond just municipalities and counties. And as we know, there have been a lot of natural disasters here the last couple of years. And so that company has taken some hits and has had to make adjustments in their price. They have made adjustments for us in the previous couple decades, but this time they were not able to move. And based on that information is why we sought out some other potential quotes to try to realize some savings.
Good. Thank you, Eric. That was a, that was a good research project forum and good results. And, you know, when we first started looking at the League of Municipality Insurance, the, it looked pretty good. But there was some benefits and some package, you know, differences that led him to look in a little bit further and, and Bruce Freeland assisted in that. And if there's any questions, yes, Ryan, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to, two questions. How many different insurance carriers are there for municipalities? And that you have gotten quotes from? And how many claims does the city have in a year or?
That can vary greatly. I know that the, the larger ones, the insurance companies, and there's not competitively, there's a few. And I think we probably, or I think Eric did due diligence on that portion of it. As far as claims, that can vary. I mean, depending on, you know, workers' comp claims and so forth and so on, how safe we are. We do have a implementation of a safety factor in, in this, in the city of Menominee. And if we need, Dave can speak on that. But, but that is very incredible too, and teaches people, you know, safety rules and how to handle themselves on the job sites and so forth. And that's more than paid for itself since it's been implemented a few years back. So I think that's an open, open-ended question. And if we wanted to suspend the rules and hear Bruce talk, we could make a motion to do so, but that's up to the council. Penny?
I'll make a motion to, to suspend the rules so Bruce can speak.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Eric, go ahead.
I'll second it.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Hi Bruce, good evening.
Hello.
Maybe you can answer some of those questions better than I can.
Well, no, you did a good job. You know, the, the municipality market is, it's a tougher market for workers' comp. Right now, you know, there's not as many carriers. You know, we write a lot of, CIC, a little bit of background on them. They write, they, they insure municipalities, school districts and counties. So out of the 70 counties, 72 counties, I think they insure 59 or 60 of them municipalities. They're one of the only carriers that will write all lines, including work comp. Work comp's tough, obviously because of fire and police, you know, it's a high hazard job. So when we look at that, you know, how many carriers are out there doing it? EMC is a big player, you know, in Wisconsin. The League of Municipities is a big player. The League, like when I was talking to Eric, the League and CIC, CIC stands for Community Insurance Corporation. They're very similar. Eric mentioned, you know, the non-aggregated policy. All that means is there's no limit to your, you have a $7 million aggregate on your liability. So when you look at that, you'll have your, your, your professional liability for the city council members here. You'll have your police professional, your firefighter professional, you're going to have your employment practices, general liability. You're going to have $7 million for every claim. And then it reinstates. You don't have a, there's no need for an umbrella. Okay? So it's a very, the, the two carriers that offer that in the state of Wisconsin that I'm, I'm aware of are the League and CIC. Another advantage that CIC and, and EMC do, they, they offer a blanket on your property. So they take all your buildings through the city. And they, they, they come up and they put them under one lump number. The same with your business personal property. And then they have a third coverage called property in the open. So basically signs, signs, streetlights, things like that that are hard, you know, how do you put an address on them, you know? So they have that. And I believe our, our property limit on this renewal is about 110 million. And our, our rate was about a 10 cent rate, which is very, very competitive yet. Years ago, rates were down around the five cent rate. And that's why there's a lot of carriers not in the property market for schools and municipalities anymore. They've, they've gotten beat up. EMC is one of them. Some factors why there's not as many carriers in there, reinsurance, there's less reinsurers. Inflation is a big deal. The economy, you know, when you guys spoke of labor, labor shortages, we deal with it. You know, the supply chain's a huge deal. When we do have a loss now, you know, we've had some major losses. We have a major loss a block down from us. You know, just the, the timeline of getting materials in to rebuild is different. So coming in with a very solid quote like this is, is very good. EMC still has very good rates. These rates are very, very, very good. The thing you'll, you'll very much enjoy about CIC, we write, you know, locally in three counties right around here with CIC, I think I have about 10 or 11 with CIC. Their renewals are very, very flat. So you as council people, the budget's very, very simple. Eric will like that. The mayor will like that. You, they're not one of those bait and switch. You'll, you'll come in, we'll show you a number and you'll see it next year and you'll go, oh, that's really good. We actually were flat on a lot of our school renewals and backwards on some this year. So it's a very, very good program. CIC, like I said, all they do is the three different classes of business. So it's been solid, very, very solid program. So.
Okay, thank you. You know, I, I'm pretty confident in, in these numbers, number one. And I know that also if, if necessary, EMC has been a good carrier for years to come, or for years past. And over the years to come, it would be also good. I think where Eric and I, or Eric got going is, you know, any increases at all. And we're trying to look at dollars, I mean, real fiscal money. And so that's what led to this. But if you wanted to, you know, stay with your current carrier, Eric, if you want to touch on that, you can with the budget.
Yeah, so the budget that you recently passed does account for continuing with EMC insurance. So if you decided to stay with EMC and not make the transition, that's just fine. We're not going to have to do anything unusual with our budget and how it's allocated through the various accounts. Whereas it just becomes a change if we switch to CIC, we would realize that potential savings.
So question for you, Bruce. What is your experience with CIC and their claims and how they handle claims? Because, hey, who doesn't want to save money?
Right.
But the claims handling is huge.
Yeah, yeah, we have a local, we have, you'd have assigned claims. Mitchell Benish is the guy that we use. They actually, when you have a couple advantages that we like, they have a pre-loss claim. So, and I was mentioning it to Eric, which is unique to them. So if you have an inkling that there's maybe a liability issue, there's something, there's a professional something that's happening. Right now, I don't know if you work with Wild Riley or what law firms you guys work with, but you know, you have to make the call like, hey, this maybe is happening, maybe not. We have forms you can fill and we can get somebody on the case. If it turns into a claim, great, they already have the information. And if it doesn't, they have the expense. So they have some stuff like that. The claim's been good. They're, they, they'll, they'll come out, meet. They're kind of a no-nonsense company, you know? This is all they do. So they're very, very detailed. They know schools, they know munis, they know counties. So, you know, when you come talk to the people at the county and, and you can talk to them, it's called County Mutual. It's this, you know, it's, it's a subsidiary of CIC. Same thing, same people, same, you know, a different underwriter. But yeah, they're very, very good. Good question, Penny. But we're very confident in them. I know our agency ensures over 65 school districts. The munis, we write a lot more in Southern Wisconsin. Our affiliation, and we, we were acquired Indian Head Insurance in 2018. And we've still been, we've been doing business as Indian Head Insurance. We're actually Anse and Associates now. And our sign will change January sometime, wherever my body works in the same building as Cedar Creek Dental. So that's where we never, we never had access to them. So we've had, worked with the city with Lowell, I believe in 2005. So I'm very familiar with the city's account, very familiar with the buildings. You know, what we've done the last few years, which EMC did a very good job. They helped us come out and do valuations on a lot of the properties. You know, especially the sewer, sewer plants and things of that nature, just because, you know, if we do have a, a loss, you know, what's it going to cost to replace it? So they've been very helpful. But yeah.
Lee?
Yeah, I moved to authorized administration purchase liability insurance with CIC beginning on January 1st of 2024.
Okay, Penny?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Ben, good motion? Good motion, thank you. I need discussion. Yes, Chad?
I have one more question. I believe it when I read.
Use your microphone.
I believe I read in here that there's going to be a lot of considerable training for city employees.
No, they'll, they'll, they'll have, they have a lot of risk management services that they offer free of charge, value added. But no, there's nothing that's going to be forced on you from the insurance company. They're not going to come out and make you do any training, but they do have a huge video library. Our agency also does have our own risk management team. But yeah, there's not, they're not going to come out to the departments and make them, you have to, you have to do this training, but there, there are services available.
Okay.
Yeah.
I missed it. I misinterpreted.
No, no. I'm going to jump in there if that, if that's okay. I think what you're referring to is towards the back of the packet and related to the CIC where they have the, the like, the online classes where you can take for employees, both on the safety side of things as well as HR and those. That, in that academy piece of it, not just the risk management, but also the coursework that's available for employees.
Yep.
Yes, that is, that was included in on that package there.
That's an add-on benefit, basically.
Yes.
Correct. We don't, we don't, do we have that now? With EMC?
Yeah.
We did.
And through our agency, we have our own risk management portal called Anse Risk Pro where you can go on safety videos, posters, this, you know, different documents you can go, you know, you, you can use, you can download all free of charge. CIC offers that as well. EMC has that. With workers' comp, they have the same MedPro claim reporting. It'll be in there where if a department head, somebody gets hurt at whatever, and they want to turn the claim in. Years ago, you used to have to, you know, write it out and get all the info. Now they get on the phone and they talk and it's, they call a risk, a, a nurse case manager. And the reason we like that is sometimes because, you know, they're not, you know, a department head, they're not a doctor or nurse. They don't know how to, to tell somebody to do. But when they, when they report that, it's their, that, that's their first report of injury. And also it might avoid, the, the nurse case manager might go, you know, go home, puts some ice on it, takes some ibuprofen. Because what Eric was referring to and the mayor earlier about our experience modification factor, that's something we always want to protect. Right now, I believe our modification factor is 1.16. So we're a little above where we want to be. And, and that's on a three-year average. What they do is they take your three years of losses on work comp and they take what you, what you actually have versus what you expected to, you were expected to. And that's all based on your, your payrolls. So there's things that we, you know, we, we can work with you on. You know, the city, like I said, they, they've done well. Once in a while, it's a tough, there's some hazardous positions, you know? The, the police officers have a hard job, you know, and they, you know, a, a back injury happens, it, it's hard, you know? So sometimes they, they, it's a high hazard, but, but there's a lot of services that we, we can offer. And, and the training, we have offer claims management, claims reviews we can do with staff, a lot, a lot of different things like that. So.
Good. Thank you. Okay, last chance for council. There's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded. So we are ready. If there's any, any more discussion, otherwise a roll call vote, please.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yeah.
Thank you, Bruce, for being here this evening.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. Oh, did you have something else you wanted to add?
No.
Okay, good. All right, we're going to keep on going. We're going to make up some time now. So ladies and gentlemen, under six E would be consideration of enterprise financial solutions. Jamie's here also this evening to talk on it. If we need her to speak on it, otherwise I'm going to open the floor to Eric, if you can get us started.
Absolutely. So back in, what would be May of this, this year, city staff and administration started researching. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in today too, please. Appreciate it. City staff and administration started working to take a look at a potential replacement for our enterprise financial solution system. Right now, we're using Avenue Insights. And then over, over the course of that, that timeframe, we took a look at a variety of systems. Civic Systems being one, Tyler Technologies is another, Oracle Systems, Workhorse was another one, Banner was another system as well. And we tried to, we, we had demonstrations that were done to take a look and see what their capabilities are and whether or not they could fit the type of services that we were going to use. And what we're really looking for, and there were ways to simplify the process, is it, is it something that's user-friendly? Is it something that can cover all of our, all of our needs, a general ledger, utility payment, H R, payroll? And then the other part is too, was it something that might be able to increase our operational efficiency in how we're doing business? So can department heads and their assistants and business managers in their offices, are they able to look at and see what they have for ongoing encumbrances? Can it help aid both administration and staff in developing city budgets to present to the city council each year? Does it also help us monitor those budgets to make sure we can minimize potential budget transfers and other kinds of changes that we need to do for our accounting system? So over the course of that evaluation, we had department heads, we had staff that were part of this process that could take part in these demonstrations. And then also provide feedback as to what product would potentially be the best fit. Through that process, we narrowed it down to two different enterprise systems. One was Civic Systems. The other one was Tyler Technologies. They're both very popular. They're both widely used. Uh, Civic Systems is a part of the Baker Tilly organization. They're a organization that employs about forty-one thousand people. Civic Systems is a company that's based out of Plano, Texas. They have about seventy-five hundred employees and they are widespread across the United States, providing a variety of technological solutions. We recommend going with Civic Systems for our replacement financial system for a couple of reasons. They had a competitive upfront cost. And then their ongoing cost was also less than what we're paying right now for our two financial systems for, for Avenue Insights and then, uh, Peachtree slash Sage. But most importantly out of that, we felt that this was something that our staff in the finance department would be able to flourish with as well as our department heads and their assistants and managers within the departments would be able to utilize readily. Thus improving our financial management and accounting. And it would also produce the kind of reports that we need for our auditors as well as for the state that we submit to the Department of Revenue. This, this was a long process that required a tremendous amount of staff input. And I just want to thank everybody for the efforts that they put into this because this, this took quite a considerable amount of time. Probably didn't go as fast as, as someone like, like me. Uh, but the point is, is that we need, needed to be able to take that time to really make sure that we were looking for a long-term solution. Our current solution has lasted over forty years. So the city manager at that time and staff, they did a great job along with the council and finding something that lasted. We're hoping that this will also provide a lasting, lasting piece of technology for us that will help us improve the operational efficiencies throughout the entire city, not just within the finance department.
Okay, thank you, Eric. Um, Jamie, our comptroller, treasurer, um, if you could take the microphone, I just want to ask you one simple question. Is this?
Only one?
Only one.
Okay.
Is this particular software the one that you would choose over the other software packages, number one? And the second portion of that first question is, will it save hours in, uh, and make the, the, um, your offices run more efficiency, more efficient and streamlined? And I guess that's one question.
Yes, yes, and yes, yes, yes. This one, yeah.
Yes, it's to one question. That's pretty good, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. It was a, I mean, anything that we have, anything that we picked was going to be better than what we have. Um, but we really, we went through, we went through all of the steps and we really critiqued every single one that we chose. And we picked, we, I think we did five of them. And yep, we picked the one that we thought was going to be the best and for our departments as well. Because nobody in any department can see any of our financials.
The other, um, half of the first question is, so this is not the most expensive of all of the software packages.
No.
But it gives you what your needs are, I understand. But isn't our current software packages, or isn't our current software, doesn't it go down sometimes and you can't get the, um, help needed to? Tell me a little bit about that.
Correct. Yeah, we can't even get support. And it will take, actually, we were down today for a couple of hours. And they couldn't tell us why. They just email us and say, you know, we're working on it.
The one thing that's, that's, that's just, that can't happen. Number one. The other thing I was wondering about is what about, uh, you know, um, somebody that wants to invade, you know, your software and take it over? Is there, um, systems in place to prevent that? Like for instance, what do they call it?
Yeah, multi-factor authentication that can take place. And then, uh, both our current system and then these systems do have ways to try to protect it. So it, it is challenging for people to break into it. And with our current system that we have, I don't know if there are too many young hackers that could recognize what it looks like.
Yeah, I mean.
Penny?
And I don't know if it's a pro, it's through Avenue that we have, or is, is it through our I T guy, Tom, that has maybe built something around it? So maybe.
It's a combination of both.
Right.
Yeah, I know I can't get into it. I, of course, my computer isn't plugged down. And so Penny?
Okay, so the mayor's one question turned into four, if not five. I was trying to count as we went. But I guess my question is, this is obviously what you're most comfortable with, and that's amazing. Um, the one question that hasn't been brought up because I've been in situations where we've changed our software before. What about the transition? I love the fact that it's going to be less expensive than the most expensive option. But do you feel like it'll be a comfortable transition from what we have now into the next? Because obviously a forty-year outdated system, bringing it into where we're at now is difficult.
Mm-hmm. It definitely is. Um, we've talked to a couple of municipalities that have done the transition and it went really well with them and they gave us some pointers and pump the brakes is what they told us. So I think we've gotten some really good ideas and just to take our time. So, and, and they're really willing to work with us. You know, and we're the, we're paying for this. So I think we really have a say in it and they were really great with us. So.
I think what I wanted to, to even go deeper into what you were asking, Penny, is that one of the things that made Civic rise to the top was in their implementation as well as once it goes live is in person. The other vendor that we were looking at seriously considering that came in second on there. They were, they, they were insistent upon doing a virtual implementation, which we've done a couple of those and we've had some challenges with those virtual implementations. And they were willing to come onsite live, when we go live for a limited period of time. Civic is willing to come onsite, go on live and then help work people through it. So really having that upfront, hands-on instruction for both our finance department and the other persons that will be involved with it. I, I know I personally value that. That, that really tipped the scales in their favor because they were very competitive in what, in what they offer. Tyler, which was second, probably has more module type options. We wouldn't necessarily need all of those. I mean, if you wanted to look at growing over the course of years, if we stuck with them, there is that potential. But for what we're utilizing right now and for being able to provide that onsite training, the onsite onboarding, working with us to make that transition. Because cha- change is challenging, no doubt about it. And we've been using this system for a long time, which I'm, I'm willing to bet we're going to have to change some internal processes to make, to make this thing work. Having people right here with us, lack of a better term, kind of holding our hand through the process. We'll just, we, we just found a lot of value in that.
Great. Anything you want to add to? Oh, Gretchen?
I, I just want to say I'm really excited about it. Enterprise system, having a good one is key and getting away from Peachtree, excellent. But, um, my question is about transition also. Uh, what is the, uh, thought process about what is being transitioned? Because you've got a lot of data. It's a chance to call. It, that takes time and effort to do that. Are we just doing a one-to-one, just throwing it in? Having an archive that has a break or how are, how are we transitioning the data that we do have?
I, I can tackle that question. And that's a great question too, because that was one of our concerns. What about our historical data? What is needed? Are we just, should we be cutting it right off or, or what? And really it depends on the, the entity that wants to move forward for, for our practical purposes. We are going to convert three years of historical data into this system. Now, does that mean the data that we've collected through Avenue and Peachtree before that is gone? No, that data belongs to us. Well, in all likelihood, we'll end up converting that into like a C S V file. So that way we can convert that whenever we, we might need to. Plus, we also have our previous financials that are done by our auditors as well as copies of their work. So we can go back in time if let's say we wanted to look at seven years past as to what our financials look like. But for this particular thing, we're going to use a three-year window of historical data. In all likelihood, if, if this is approved to, to move forward with a purchase, we would sign a contract in January. We, after, after our council's finished reviewing the contract that's available to us. We would look at that implementation process. We're thinking a, a seven to eight month window where they're going to be doing data conversion, training for staff, myself to be able to utilize the system, going live at some time in the, the late third or early fourth quarter of next year. We'll also, in all likelihood, run our current system, Avenue side by side, just to make sure that we're having the same, the reports that we need to for auditing and for the Department of Revenue purposes. Everything looks good. Then when we go into twenty twenty-five, we'll abate our use of Avenue and Peachtree and they'll be a hundred percent live with the Civic Systems.
Good answer. I got questions, Penny, and then Gretchen. Go ahead, Penny.
Oh, I was going to make a motion to approve bringing on Civic Systems for the city of Monominee in their new accounting software.
Yes.
Can you, um, add the dollar amount and then contingent upon?
Uh, I don't have.
I'll help you out with that, Penny, because there's one more thing I want to add to, to Ben. He just beat me to the punch. So dollar amount for the upfront year one support is a hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. And to be able to finance this on here, because we haven't borrowed for it, we would like to have ARPA funds allocated to make this purchase.
Okay, apparently I need to change my motion. I will, well, I will, um, update my motion to, oh, here we go. It's right in front of me. Thanks to Jeff. Um, approving the purchase of Civic Systems for one hundred eighty-eight thousand nine hundred thousand dollars contingent upon legal review and utilizing ARPA funding.
Good motion. Good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Gretchen, go ahead, please.
I'll second that motion and then can I ask my question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my question is about the eight licenses and how long, um, can you just roll a license in? Like, say we have a transition of employees and you need a ninth for the transition period. Um, is it a full year cost or is it prorated? The amount of time that they have licenses and is eight, was that determined based on the number of managers or folks that would be using the system?
I can do that. So all good questions as it relates to the licenses. So that, that was something that, that we were concerned about because the, the question is what, what does the licenses mean? Concurrent licenses mean transition and all that good stuff? Because Civic has licenses, Tyler did not. Civic defines the eight licenses as the super users. These are the people that have full access to, to the software suite. So that would be our treasurer comptroller and her staff within the office. We can add in several other super users that are not part of it. However, though, other staff throughout the city can still utilize the program. But they just don't need to have all the full breadth of authority in there. Because, for example, I would not be a super user in that because I'm not going to be doing direct entries into ledgers or doing utility payments. I would be much like the other department heads where I'm working to help facilitate the creation of the bud, the general fund budget, capital improvements. That, that was a, a key question because we would want far more than just the eight. Because if we're going to include all the staff that would have some need to be able to look at it. And so that is, that is how it was defined to me.
Okay, thank you. Good answer to a good question. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Sutherland? Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
First head?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That takes us down to six F, appointments of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five election inspectors. Kate is here this evening that can speak on this. Kate, our city clerk?
Yeah, uh, well, this is just a kind of a formality that the council needs to address every two-year cycle for election workers. Um, so in the odd year coming up on the next two-year cycle, um, by state statute, you are, the governing body, um, has to approve the party affiliated election inspector lists that I received from both the Democratic and Republican parties. And then I've included the unaffiliated list in there as well. So those are people that just fill in the gaps where I need them when I run out of people on the party affiliated lists. So.
Lee?
Moved to approve the appointment twenty twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five elections inspectors is presented.
Okay, good motion. Ben?
Okay.
Okay, good motion. Thank you. All right. Is there a second to Lee's motion? Randy?
I'll second Lee's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Jeff?
Yeah, I was wondering, uh, why Dave and Eric and the rest of the city's staff gets all these nice colorful. And Kate gets a black and white.
Priorities. Next question. Is there any other discussion matters? Okay, all in favor of said motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one. Six G, consideration of agreement with Rent Fund for kayak rental kiosk at Lakeside Park. This is a pretty cool opportunity here and, uh, I think it's something that we've been toying with or I've been toying with for a couple of years now, trying to figure out a way to do this. Uh, Dave and staff came up with a method, uh, and, uh, there's also some funding, uh, coming through a couple of different channels and I'll take, uh, Dave Schofield can talk on this. David?
Yeah, so we met with, uh, this company or rent dot fun here earlier this year and they have the ability to do, uh, kayak rentals. Uh, in this case, the picture that I have on the screen here is a eight kayak rental. The unit that we would be looking at would be a four kayak rental. So it'd be one single, um, stack of, of, um, large lockers, I guess is the best way to describe it. Um, and so the idea is that the city would, would purchase this, uh, this installation and then they would operate it for a period of five years in one of our parks. As, uh, kayaks get damaged, get lost, um, as the, you know, the paddles and life jackets and that sort of thing, um, were to, get damaged, they would come and replace those. They have a local person that would maintain those, um, on a, on a regular basis. Uh, the cost is eighteen thousand dollars. That would be an upfront payment, uh, over the, for the succeeding five years. Uh, there would be no cost to the city. In fact, we would get fifty percent of the rental fees back from, uh, the company. They've suggested a, a rental fee of approximately twenty-five dollars for, uh, two hours. Um, that may go up or down depending on how we see it, it being used. Um, I, I wouldn't say that this is a money-making venture that we're, that we're entering into. Uh, the idea is that we're trying to promote the use of, of our water body. Um, and this is one way of, of trying to encourage folks that don't necessarily have the means to go out and buy all three of these, uh, devices, but be able to get out on the water and, and use it. Um, so it, there is a, uh, presentation in the packet and, um, I can certainly answer any questions on it. I'm, I'm sure that, that, um, folks might have some.
I'm going to have Ben ask the first question. Ben?
Dave, when you and I spoke about it, um, indicated there's some surrounding areas that have utilized this. Can you just indicate? Yeah, um, the, the closest one is in Woodbury in Coverlake Park is the nearest one. Uh, they have, uh, I know there's four in Minnesota, four in Wisconsin. Um, in Wisconsin, there's one in, uh, Marathon County and there's several in the Appleton, Kimberly combined locks, uh, that sort of area there. Um, this would be the first one in, in Dunn County and in Western Wisconsin. I believe they're also talking with the city of New Richmond, um, on there in one of their parks.
Penny?
Uh, this is awesome to me, but what is the liability on the city with something like this?
Ben?
City has broad recreational immunity, um, on a lot of matters and this would fall in there. It can't go, I mean, each, each situation is going to be unique, um, on it, but just in general, we do have very broad recreational immunity. Um, we'll also make sure that, uh, we're going to ask that the motion be contingent upon legal review, um, to do a deep dive on this, uh, just to make sure adequate insurance is in place. Um, and, uh, other provisions within the contract to discuss that. And also be touching with, um, insurance company, our insurance carrier, just to make sure they're comfortable with, uh, the limits and everything that's going to be provided in it.
Eric?
So Ben, when you're talking about recreation. So Ben, when you're talking about recreational immunity, are you referring to how the courts uh based on the current laws on the books? Having able to shield municipalities and counties from from being sued for?
Correct.
Okay.
And when I did speak with David on this, and like I said, it is subject to a deeper dive on it. Um indicated on a regular basis and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you said uh every couple of days, maybe the individuals will come, look at the kayaks, make sure there's no issues with it. We'll check with the life jackets, paddles, make sure everything's up to par on that as well. So it is an ongoing basis there.
Right, and I understand too, this could be expanded um more 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 broad. I mean, we could do another stack of four if we wanted to down the road. The cool thing is it's self contained. You go there, you swipe your card, you get your your paddle boat and whatever kayak. Uh life jacket and and paddle and away you go. When you come back, you you know, you suppose you lock it back up and and go on to the next one. So there's no, I mean, it's not like you have to have somebody there watching it. So it's self contained and and they the cool thing is uh with having somebody come down and check on it. Uh they maintain it. So they they check the kayaks over. They do the life jacket check. And if this, what what's the payback time on this at half profit if?
So we'd have to average right around three hundred rentals a year for those five years and we would that would be about the break even point.
Break even. So um I to me, it's a win win for the for the for the for the city. But of course, that's that's up to Council Gretchen.
I don't I don't think for me, the break even is not important because I think about things like the ice skating and stuff like that, like awesome service. Um would there be like a April first to November for uh how is there a timeframe that the boats are in there?
Yeah, so we would set we would set the the time of year. So probably around sometime in April and then we take them out sometime in October.
The water hits over fifty five degrees.
Yeah, and I what I probably kind of glanced over it so that it's actually operated by a cell phone. So you'd you'd download this app, you'd you'd go through and you'd you'd sign a waiver on the app. You'd put your credit card information in, then you come up and walk up and say you scanned this that was particular. Um um kiosk and it would then open one of the um the doors on it. So it uh we don't have to have someone down there making sure people are signing on clipboard and that sort of thing.
I I was gonna say um I was talking with the one of the waterski team at Stout and they were really interested in ideas on getting more people down on the lake and to see that it you can recreate there. So this might be something to definitely connect with. At least the waterski team, if not, you know, stout adventures and stuff.
The other thing is to um tourism and tourism dollars and um the chamber is looking at co sponsoring this too. Uh they're still working on solidifying that, but there might be some co sponsor money to come forward for this purpose. Besides, the other thing is that we are doing is we're looking at a kayak launch down at that um particular location as well. So one would go hand in hand in the other and the more we can bring, the so the better it is for everybody. So um Dave, I'll let you finish out that uh anything else you need to add?
Yeah, we've worked with Tammy Simon and she's been great at the um Chamber and Visitor Center and she's been a promoter of this um of the solution. So I I appreciate working with her and if you folks are uh in support of this, I'll we'll get her to the finish line.
Okay, anything else? Okay, if anybody would like to make a motion to support this, now is your opportunity to do so. Ryland?
Yeah, I would make a motion to uh support the um agreement with rent for fun kayak rental. Contingent upon the uh legal review.
Could ask also um eighteen up to eighteen thousand dollars for it from ARPA funds.
Yep, uh with uh but eighteen thousand of ARPA funds for it.
Good motion. Good motion. Thank you Randy.
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote please.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Good, thank you. It brings us down to six H consideration updated lease agreement with Christmas Miracle Incorporated. Basically, what this is doing is um continuing the Christmas Miracle's ability to lease the property down there that used to be the old concrete maxing plant for Winter Wonderland. However, in this lease, it allows the city to uh get out there and do some maintenance in the summertime and maybe some other activities through the rec department. Uh also, it allows the city to participate in some of the other features that might be needed uh down on that land which the old lease did not contain. So basically, it's cleaning up a little bit of language and allowing the city to be a bigger player in uh supporting this um venue. So if somebody would like to make a motion for that, supporting this, we could do so this time. Chad, you got to make on?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the updated lease agreement with Christmas Miracle Incorporated.
Okay, good motion. Good motion. Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Randy?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, uh roll call vote please.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That moves us down to the uh budget transfers. Um there's a couple of them tonight. They're uh uh Eric, if you want to bring us up speed?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. So we have one that was a a later addition here. We're looking at transferring sixteen hundred seventy five dollars from our contingency account to our custom office supplies. And we are looking to do this so that way we can purchase six ADA compliant voting booths to be used in our city's polling stations for future elections. Currently, we do not have those at this moment. Our city clerk was kind enough to bring this up that we were deficient in this area. So we're asking for city council to approve that contingency transfer. And that in contingency is a healthy account, so it's not going to have a negative impact on onto our budget. Also, you're going to see another budget transfer within the packet. This one is for fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This one is to transfer funds from contingency to schools and conferences under the mayoral administration account. And this is to hire a consulting service to provide training to department head and and managers within departments on how to coach employees, how to work through conflict to create successful outcomes. And from taking an informal poll of our department heads and managers, only two of them have had any kind of training in this area. So we and for those of us who have had it, we feel we could benefit from ongoing training with it. So what we're looking at doing is making this purchase this year, holding that training in March of next year, it would be the week after the spring break. Bringing in this company, they are based out of North Carolina and they also have individuals from Michigan. I've attended their courses before and they've been excellent in terms of risk management, dealing with conflict and how to coach employees, bringing them here to do training. We would also open up the training to other outside agencies like Dunn County and then other adjacent areas for a small fee to come and attend this because it it's a wonderful class. It also provides workshops within it to give people practical experience on how to actually go through the parts of coaching employees, documentation, risk management and whatnot. So it's one of the first steps we're looking is to try to enhance our professional development here within the city. And Dolan Consulting Services is the name of the company.
Good, thank you Eric. Okay, if anybody would like to support this to the motion, you can Jeff Luther go ahead please. Jeff Luther please.
I'll make a motion to uh approve both the budget transfers as presented tonight.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to Jeff's motion Laura?
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote please.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Gents?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Burstad?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to the mayor's report real briefly. Um Wakanda Wonderland, the trees are up and lit up at Rosback Museum. So stop in and check all that out. Also, the uh winter the lights are all on at Wolfski's Bay and it's beautiful. Um so if you get a chance, take your kids, grandkids, parents, whoever, uh friends, neighbors, go down and check it out. Uh pretty soon we'll be ice skating out there. I know that the ice is a little bit hmm, but it's getting thicker and thicker. So one of these days um they'll be skating and and the families will be out there doing that as well. I'm okay without snow. But it does make it a little bit pretty when the lights are on. So um maybe we could just have that inch or so and then it can melt and go away. But other than that, I'm going to open up the floor. David, uh do you have some announcements?
No, I'm good.
Eric?
Uh I just want to uh say thank you for your support in the the insurance as well, especially in that financial software. That is going to be a real game changer here for efficiency here in the city. And I I'm very excited once once we get that onboarded and what that looks like in the next two years. It's how that changed activities. The other thing too as well that you will see uh next month, we'll be bringing forward changes in our handbook. As well as you'll probably be seeing a proposal on how we're going to address economic development here in the city. And in a future partnership with Dunn County, the GMDC. And I I'm I'm very excited for it and all these things like park amenities, upgrades and approval or improvements. Lake bank improvements are all going to really intertwine with our economic development, making this a a very attractive community for people to want to come here, live here, play here, open businesses here and then thrive here.
Great, thank you Eric. I've been also attending the BRE meetings, which means Business Retention Expansion Meetings, which we are we go out with um uh and talk with uh different businesses uh in the tech industrial parks and around the city of Monominee. Uh referring to them and and finding out what their needs may be in the future and so forth and uh really communicating with uh those businesses. So uh that's been fun and interesting uh as well. Uh remember that January city council meetings will be on January eighth and January twenty second this year, so eighth and twenty second of January. It's a little bit of a change and also the plan commission meeting will be held on January twenty ninth uh coming up this year. Uh that being said, I think uh open it up for communications from council Gretchen.
I just want to let the everyone know that the Federal Rail Association did approve Phase One. So half million dollar grant for the Eau Claire to Twin Cities Corridor. Wisconsin actually got eight corridors approved. Um so it's 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 go and we're moving forward, working with the FRA uh liaison. And part of Phase One is determining, it's a no match Phase One, by the way. Um is determining uh what the municipalities and the counties and and entities will be. Um what timing, locations, things like that. So.
Sort of a feasibility study?
Essentially, well, it's it's the it's the beginning of the planning and the preparations for so the there's four phases. Um Phase One is no match and then there's there's a ten percent match and then a twenty percent match for Phase Three. Um which is actual implementation, um but that would be spread out over the entire corridor. Um and I anticipate putting forward that the uh municipalities that have the actual stations to be locating in their area should be released from some of the other expenses since we will be, you know, dealing with the stations themselves.
Interesting. Thank you. Thank you for serving on that. But yep.
Any info that you want to give to me?
Yeah, keep keep tracking us down on that. Um many other communications from go ahead Cody.
Um I did want to say that I appreciated seeing the pedestrian warning signs out by Quick Trip uh Quick Trip and Stout after that most recent uh incident. I do think that is a good area where we could look at some more permanent improvement, be it lighting, additional signage. Um I've heard a lot about areas with deficient lighting and people feel unsafe. And I think that is one kind of high profile area just because it's so busy. Um but I do appreciate the uh temporary signs out there to kind of increase visibility.
Good, good, good. Uh thank you Cody. Uh go ahead Dan.
Yeah, if I might address that. So we will be installing uh crosswalk signs on both sides of the intersection. Uh we ordered them today. They'll be installed as soon as we can get the the signs in place and the locates cleared. The temporary signs are are not a permanent solution. They already got hit uh several times since we put them in on Friday. Um so we uh Stout had asked us because of commencement and because of the amount of foot traffic that that they were expecting for people coming to the to the actual event to to try to put those out. That's not something we're going to be able to sustain over time. Uh we've already had to fix them twice. So um but we will be putting out signs at that intersection. Um the lighting on that intersection, I I've looked at it. It's actually not as as bad as some have suggested. There's a highlight in the northwest corner and then Stout has some lights in the southeast corner. Um that's not where I would probably start adding additional lighting. Um but certainly we can add the signs. Um that should help uh folks there. I do think it's worth noting that we have a signal at tenth uh RFB at tenth. We have a traffic signal at at eleventh and a traffic signal at thirteenth. Um so in the meantime, before the signs get up, um I I think it'd be good for pedestrians to try to use one of those existing uh signalized intersections.
So Dave, you're you're saying um signage at on twelfth?
At the intersection of twelfth and Broadway.
Okay, that's I cross that every day. So I'm I'm full for it.
Well, the the instruction is to go down to the light now and cross then come back. So sorry. All right, oh Randy, go ahead.
Um I just wanted to say the parade was fantastic. Um it wa it was really awesome and first year, my wife hasn't gotten cold, so we had to leave early. But um there was a ton of people. I haven't seen that many people down there. So it was excellent.
Yeah, the the parade count uh was uh the the so the supposed count was seven point three thousand. So seven thousand three hundred people was the uh you know, guesstimate count of attendance. So pretty cool. And it was a warm night. So yeah, good night to bring your wife down to the parade. So anything else? Uh yes Gretchen?
I I really enjoy that Wisconsin with a little heart on it on the lake.
Yeah.
Already taken a campaign picture there, just.
Well, you know, and I have seen people down there getting photo ops. So it's 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 pretty cool. Yeah, that's that's a that's a plus. You know, the more we can do like that, but even the little things like that uh put us on the map. Um and uh it's that's really interesting and and really nice. Um anything else from council otherwise? No? Okay, I think we can keep her moving. So quarter nine, here we go. Uh under claims, if we want to six uh ten, if we want to pay the bills uh claims list, it's a revised claims list. I'm sorry. Yeah, so if we want to pay the bills um under ten under claims, now's the opportunity to make a motion to do so. Ryland?
Yeah, I would make a motion to pay the revised claims list.
Okay, uh motion is good. Is there a second to the Ryland's motion?
I'll second Ryland's motion.
Okay, motion been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Roll call vote please.
Gents?
Yes.
Schlue?
Yes.
Erdman?
Yes.
Summerfeld?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes, yes.
Yanko?
Yes.
McCullough?
Yes.
Schwabs?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It brings us down to licenses. It's the normal license list. The Sunrise Rotary, I believe, is the one on there. Jeff Luther go ahead please.
I make a motion to approve the license list as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second Jeff's motion.
Motion been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. No closed session tonight. Um I don't know what we're going to do because Cody was gone for a week or so. So is there anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Well, motion to a ma motion to adjourn has been made. Is there a second to that motion? Jeff Luther?
Don't worry, I'll second Cody's motion to adjourn.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there's one last thing now there uh for the council members. Um we're adjourned. We are adjourned, but there's one last thing for the council members. There is a Christmas present on the back table. Your name is attached. There is a couple of sizes if they don't fit. Uh so um be sure to grab that. Also, uh a little song from the council to everybody should be wish you a merry Christmas. Everybody ready? We wish you a merry Christmas. Oh boy, thanks a lot guys. Merry Christmas, everybody.